For Tuesday, September second, two thousand and twenty five, first time on our agenda is the two thousand and twenty six budget session number four. Review of enterprise funds and utility rate recommendations, and we'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening. We're moving right along in the budget process. Session number four, we're almost to the end. So we'll focus tonight mostly on the enterprise funds. We've already talked about the capital projects in each of these funds, so that's included in your information, but I'll breeze through that. And we'll spend more time on the user fee fee recommendations. It is. Just turn it on. It's functional then. It's wild. So, starting with our largest enterprise fund, which is our water fund. Total revenue projections are showing about nine point seven million dollars in total revenue for next year. The largest component of that being operating revenue that comes largely from user rates. You'll see we also get a large amount from system maintenance and expansion revenue, which is largely our tap fees or system development fees. That we'll talk about the rates of also. In total, it is a two percent decrease in revenue over two thousand and twenty five's budget for the water fund. And that is different than the other two enterprise funds. And if you'll recall, we're. This is really year two of implementation of the water rate study. So we're kind of building up to that ideal water rate structure where the other two funds have been fully implemented, if you will. At the bottom, you'll see the three reasons that we hold funds in the water fund. In those reserves, you know, wanting to make sure that we're holding the right money for the right purposes, the largest one being water supply. So staff's working currently on the water resources plan to identify what some options might be for future water shares for the city. That information will help council make decisions on where to set and allocate resources in future years for our water supplies. And then holding a large amount of money also for infrastructure and maintenance. So we know that our treated water does come from Greeley. We have a cap in that quantity of water that Greeley will treat at our current rate. If and when we exceed that, we are holding money to pay for that expansion cap. And I've worked more this year with Justine to drill down on some of those dollars and those estimates. And so as we finalize the budget, you'll see in that long range plan for the water fund, instead of just holding a blanket dollar amount. She has it forecasted and phased for twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, and I believe twenty nine as well. What that amount might be if we continue on a two percent increase each year on our water usage, what that cost would mean in terms of that system cap. And then maintenance, there's miles and miles of water pipes as well as, you know, valves and hydrants and everything that need to be maintained and flushed and cleaned and functional. And so trying to ensure that we have the right amount of money sitting aside for maintenance of the water fund items as well. For our water rates for next year, again, this is year two of the water rate study implementation. So these are rates that were included in the study that council approved last year. There were inflationary assumptions in there, lots of different factors. When we went back and reviewed those, everything seemed to still be validating the costs that we're seeing. Didn't see any reason to increase the rates above what the water rate study had recommended. So you'll see just an inside city water base rate, a change there of a dollar forty nine to bring that base rate up to twenty six dollars and twelve cents. Dollar higher for outside city users. Potable water was also included in the water rate study, hence roughly a four percent increase for those tiers. Larger for commercial, so you'll see anywhere between twenty three and eighty six cents per a thousand gallons. We have not changed the structure of the tier system. That first tier to make four tiers total for residential was incorporated last year as part of the rate study. So there is that lowest tier available still for our lower water users. We heard some positive feedback of folks that appreciated the opportunity to pay less for, you know, homes that are incredibly water conscious or smaller families, whatever your situation might be. We did hear some positive feedback about that first lowest tier. So happy that we can still provide that in our structure. The non-potable water rates were also included in the water rate study. So we have non-potable and Willowbrook assumptions still in there, and then the ditch rates were not. So what we're recommending in the ditch rates is an increase equal to our consumer price index inflationary costs. That should be relative to ongoing costs of supplies, chemicals, maintenance, staffing, that sort of thing. I've again talked with Justine Moore and Ty also about the ditch rates. And this is an area of the water fund that they're hoping to put more attention in future rate studies or even just water master plan studies in two thousand and twenty six and into two thousand and twenty seven to further understand what the true costs of the ditch system are. We likely are not still paying for what it costs, but we don't know exactly what it costs at this point. So my recommendation is to continue to keep increasing, at least in terms of that CPI index, so that we don't fall further behind while we figure out what the true cost of that ditch system is. Switching from the user fees to the system development fees or the tap fees. You'll see at the bottom, no change in the index. So our code is pretty clear about which indices we must use when we're looking at impact fee cost increases. And for the system development fees, as opposed to the DOLA Department of Local Affairs Consumer Price Index factor for our local area. We have to use the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. You've probably heard me say this before, but that is supposed to be more indicative of a true construction cost as opposed to relative cost of consumer goods. What I found when I pulled this up, though, is for for Denver, for which is the closest area we can drill down on for this index. For two thousand and twenty four, it was like zero point zero one percent. So essentially, no cost increase year over year, and it tries to do a twenty year average for construction costs. I think two years ago, it was like five point six percent. Last year, it went down to half that, two point six, two point seven, and this year, zero. So the index that I must use to apply these rates says there is zero percent cost increase for our system development and tap fees. So spoiler alert, you'll see this same note on both the wastewater and the storm drainage fund system development fees also. Water fund expenses, I have a slide here next for capital, but we also have some asset management costs. Staff's identified air compressor trailers, a valve maintenance trailer, some maintenance items, attachments for a backhoe, and then a snow plow blade for one of the trucks that can just kind of help increase their efficiency, the work that they're able to do in a quicker manner and keep that maintenance activity rolling for the water system. Also have included in there, we have our bulk water fill system. It's currently pretty archaic and fed with quarters that then are brought down to me to take quarters to the bank. It's a pretty fun process, and that's also not working. So they have identified an option to spend about twenty two thousand dollars to get a credit card payment processor, if you will, so that we can actually have better control over that water usage and better control over the money also. So I'm very much in favor of creating some more efficiency in that process. Not much otherwise because there's so much going on in some of the capital needs. So our operating expenses are about seven point four million dollars. That does include the treatment of water that we pay to Greeley. And then we have system maintenance and expansion expenses, which are largely our capital projects. And I promised I wouldn't go through these in detail since we've already done that, but just a reminder that there is forty million dollars at a minimum of identified projects and needs in the water fund that are currently either unfunded and or un prioritized in terms of when we have to get this work done, although it's been identified as as a need in the in the near future. So working on that water economics analysis and then staff will be rolling on to that water master plan that'll give us a lot of additional information to prioritize future projects and needs of the water fund. And we talked about the three reasons that we're holding cash balance, which is our fund balance in these enterprise funds. For the water fund, you'll see that ending number going down largely because of the capital costs that we have budgeted for next year. So this is still keeping our operating reserves intact. It is still keeping funds set aside for the Greeley system expansion cap. And largely, all those additional dollars are going into the system for maintenance and capital projects. So moving on to our second fund, we'll follow each of these in much of the same manner and order as we did the water fund. So our wastewater total revenue is about seven point six million dollars. We take all of the wastewater fees and separate them out in terms of what is what's needed for our major maintenance ongoing operating expenses, and then what can we hold for future expansion? And those future expansion dollars also include the system development fees or those tap fees. Because this fund is fully implemented in the wastewater rate study. It allowed us to actually see two percent increase in our revenue over the two thousand and twenty five budget. So this fund is is still accumulating dollars where the water fund is kind of in that rebuilding state with that reevaluation of the water rates. In the wastewater fund, a couple of different reasons why we hold funds in that cash balance or that reserve for this fund and largely is continued maintenance for our collection system, so different than than water. We need to make sure that we're able to get all the wastewater to the plant, treat it, and then do maintenance and also expansion could have been on this slide too for what that future expansion needs are for the plant and for future equipment also. Wastewater rates being fully implemented, this is year two post-rate study implementation. And we did recommend a five percent increase on two rates last year to keep up with the trajectory we were making in terms of having enough money in this fund for major maintenance and for system expansion. I mentioned to water and sewer board, it's going to be be very, very critical. These dollars that we can build on our own for these enterprise funds for for all three of them. But as some of the funding sources are getting more competitive or having caps of what we can apply for, even in terms of loans. Our SRF loan, which is a fairly interest rate subsidized opportunity, it's how we paid for the current wastewater treatment plant. We were able to get a forty two million dollar loan when we built that plant, and now the limit on that funding is eighteen million. So we've been just a handful of short years, seen those opportunities for funding really decreased. The options might be there, they're even more competitive, and the dollar amounts are harder to get. So long way of saying it's important for us to keep moving on rate increases to keep up with the cost of doing service and not be dipping into that reserves if we can build at all and have some cash or some some leveraging opportunity to get other assistance when we have large capital needs, that'll become incredibly important for us. So a five percent increase in that residential base rate will be two dollars and twenty three cents. And then the same for the consumption per thousand gallons after that four thousand gallon winter water average use will go up that same five percent, so twenty nine cents per a thousand gallons after that point. The commercial and any of the surcharges following that same five percent increase model. System development fees, again, you can see that adjustment column for both inside city and outside city. Rates are zero, so no change is being recommended in these rates for for two thousand and twenty six. And wanted to have this conversation tonight, but if if council's giving the nod for some of these factors, then finance will work with our community development department to make sure that they have the information to begin communicating to our builders as soon as possible, so they know what to expect for building permits they might be pulling in January as well. Wastewater fund expenses. You can see again, broken up similar to how the revenues were, about two point four million dollars in operating expenses. A little over five million in system maintenance and five point, almost three million in system expansion expenses. Most of that is the continued design and then starting construction of the treatment plant expansion. The fund balance for wastewater will also decrease due to the high amount of dollars being invested into capital projects. Again, I won't go through these, but you can see right away, four million dollars is what we've set aside for next year. Some of that might be long lead items, similar to what you've approved at your most recent meeting for the police station. As we're saying, we need to begin ordering items that we know we needed in the expansion as designs wrapping up and we're getting to that point. We wanted to make sure we had some budget set aside to take advantage of of the timeliness of that process. And state street line replacement being two million dollar project too. Those are pretty large undertakings for for next year's fund, and we'll draw into that cash balance a little bit. And there you can see the wastewater fund cash balance going from about eight point seven at the end of this year's projected to three point five. And then you can see all of the the resources, the revenue going up two percent, and then that large capital cost. So we'll continue to work on the funding mechanisms of what we're able to achieve for the plant expansion costs. And you can see we only have three and a half million dollars left, so we're not able to to write a check for the plant expansion. But hopefully, this will help to at least continue our our ability to pay for some. You know, we've paid for four million dollars in next year's budget to at least start the process, so that's been a huge help already. Moving on to storm drainage fund revenue, this is actually really exciting. This is our smallest of the three enterprise funds, but next year's revenue is almost a two million dollars. So this is, this is great. We're making huge strides in this fund in accumulating some real dollars to make a difference in some of the maintenance. It's far from it. But it's it's a step in the right direction, and council's made huge steps these last couple of years in making this reality come come to light. So the operating revenue that is largely our user rates and system development fees, about one point eight million dollars. So that overall increase in revenue is six percent over this year's budget. And we're we're holding those dollars largely for maintenance and system improvements. We know that the emergency repairs on that storm drainage system have really opened our eyes to some of those other needs. And really, most of the dollars that this fund's bringing in, we're trying to figure out what's the highest priority and how do we get things fixed and improved for the future. So we are recommending only a five percent increase in storm drainage. If you recall, ripped the Band-Aid off last year, and you did a fifty percent rate increase in the storm drainage fund last year. And the hopes and the conversation at that point was, great, hopefully, we never have to do a large rate increase like that again. We want to avoid that at all costs possible, but I also heard the message loud and clear from council. Let's continue on a path of increases so that we don't get ourselves in that position. So a five percent again is more than the the CPI index. It's enough that it's continuing to make ground in this fund, if you will. And the percentage in the storm drainage fund always sounds worse than the dollar amount. So a five percent increase is just a dollar and five cents for a residential unit. Recommending the same five percent increase on the commercial tiers as well. Easier message again for our development community, recommending no increase in the inflationary costs for storm drainage fee tap fees either or system development fees. And there's really only one item that we haven't talked about in storm drainage at this point, and they were asking for one additional zero turn mower as part of their asset management costs, just eighteen thousand dollars. Operating expenses are just shy of nine hundred thousand and system maintenance, and we also have a debt expense now in that storm drainage fund just over nine hundred thousand dollars. So opposite from the water and wastewater fund, the fund balance in the storm drainage fund is increasing in hopes to build some capacity for major projects. We have just one currently identified project, Ridge at Prairie View Outfall Improvements for next year. Staff's working to identify what those what those needs are. So this list is at this point incomplete. It'll probably stay this way through our budget adoption. And then once we know more, it could be early next year, we may have additional priorities to bring and look at. How do we fund it and what needs to be done in the storm drainage fund? We need to get through the pavement curbing, gutter condition scanning, and some of these emergency repairs to further understand. But I will reiterate, we've got seventy million dollars of unfunded projects in storm drainage, so we have a lot of work to do in this fund. And you'll see that cash balance or that fund balance going up just slightly, but that allows us still to build some cash as we as we look forward to what those needs are. And holding a million dollars in reserves is is pretty great. Not that long ago, we had a hundred thousand dollars in this fund, and it was really in its infancy, trying to figure out how do we actually create a program and and get some maintenance done. So long, long overdue, but it's great to see that it's building to that. And then not an enterprise fund, but I wanted to take the opportunity to speak to our refuse fund a little bit. It's a special revenue fund as opposed to an enterprise, but is largely made up of user rates. And wanted to bring this in as we're mind, as our minds are all about user rates currently. We do anticipate receiving a little over one point three million dollars in the refuse fund next year. And we will, our contract with Waste Management or WM does allow them to have their separate trash price index for cost inflations. And so it has roughly been five percent each year. I've plugged that in as a as a starting point until we know more. We generally don't know until closer to year end, and our budget's already adopted. So if it's wildly different from this, then I would bring back a recommendation for a change to council. But at this point, we're assuming the costs will go up five percent from Waste Management. And the rates that I'm recommending we charge residents will go up that same five percent. We are still able to offer the bundle trash and recycling services, so grateful to Waste Management to continue that program with Evans. That's that's a really great benefit, and if you, you know, talk to people, if there's anybody listening tonight, that is a really great opportunity for you to have a cost effective way to have curbside recycling. We learned a lot this last year from Waste Management. It is not nearly as restrictive as as we were once told. Not every little speck of of dirt has to be cleaned out of a container for it to go in your recycle bin. As long as you're following general cleanliness practices, you're putting the right types of items in your bin. It's a really cost effective way. I will also say, if you can talk to your neighbors, help them do two things. And one is put all of your trash in the recycle bin so that the lid closes. It's incredibly important. I'm not looking at anybody. Everyone's looking at the ceiling. And as well as recycling, if you're someone that does participate in the recycling program, Waste Management has good information. The city puts it out on their website and not in the Evans Express about what you can put in and what you can't. Please don't put a, I think the number one complaint we hear from Waste Management in the pictures I see is, you know, don't put all of your recycling materials in a plastic bag, tie it up and throw it in there. You've just contaminated it and they consider it trash. You just loose, drop your your items in there. What we're seeing is a ton of both those trash overage and recycling contamination charges to the point that our customer service and utility billing staff, this last bill had over nine hundred specific charges that we have to manually enter. So those are becoming so cumbersome that we're no longer able to just pass that fee on. I'm recommending that we add a twenty percent administrative fee to those because we have to manage them. It goes on the bill. We have to answer questions about them. It's taking more time. So if you have residents and neighbors and friends that, you know, you go to their house and you see they're lit up and it doesn't close on their trash lid, remind them there is a much more cost effective way to be disposing of your trash and recycling. If you you could even get a second bin, you could do recycling, you could do lots of things, but those contamination charges and the overage charges. It's a lot. It kills me to see the pictures of these every every month, and I do go through a lot of them. And they're pretty blatant, you know, if your your lid barely doesn't close, they're not going to charge you. It's generally your lid isn't even attempting to close. You've got chairs and skis and stuff sticking out of it. Seen some pretty funny things. So thanks for letting me take the opportunity to to mention that. Unfortunately, that's something that we'll have to increase the the charge on for this next year. So that'll be a five dollar flat fee for next year. So if you, and that's per week, so we see people that have every week a trash overage charge. And they're they're paying a lot more than they need to for for this service. So we we are recommending that that five percent continue for next year. For the refuse fund, what that means is our ongoing refuse, recycling costs and some related costs as well. This whole amount doesn't go to WM, but our operating cost there is a little over one point one million dollars. So not a not a small process that we run here in the city. What we're able to do is accomplish two things. Still keep a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in next year's budget for the cleanup weekend and pay for overhead costs, which is, like I mentioned, some of that time for customer service staff, for myself, for all of us that manage this fund and operate it. Sixty six thousand dollars is a is a portion of the revenue the fund gets that goes back to a general fund in that transfer. So almost one point three million dollars in costs to that refuse fund. And that allows us to still have a fund balance in the refuse fund that we're not, we're not dipping below, as we talked about the cleanup weekend this last few months. I heard the message from council, it was important that we're not dipping into the reserves of this fund, that we're we're paying what we can for the cleanup weekend, and at this point, we can keep that hundred and twenty thousand dollar budget, which is what we had currently for this year. I've been talking with Curtis, and he's got good updated numbers as far as what the spring event costs us, and so we'll wait through the fall cleanup as well. And then he intends to bring back conversation to council about what the total cost is. If if the total cost varies from this a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, again, this is the budget's fluid. And even if you've adopted the twenty six budget and council wishes for this budget to be something different than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we can modify that at that point. So you'll have an opportunity to ask questions once we get full numbers and we have good data for council to understand what a what a year's worth of that event being a single day event twice a year cost. And I'll open it up to questions here in a second, but we're, I'm excited every time that this is getting less and less. So, you know, after tonight's conversation, September sixteenth, at our next work session, we'll bring a budget overview. I have all of these great things, any other changes in the budget that we've had to make. We're still working to get the general fund balanced. It was nice to kind of forget about the general fund for for a moment and focus on these funds. We're very, very close to having that work completed, so I'm so confident that we can bring a balanced budget to council and what you'll see on the sixteenth, and then you'll consider adoption of that budget in October. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Well, thank you, Jackie. Thank you to you and your staff and everybody involved in putting this together. I really appreciate it. Great job on it. Do have a couple of questions for you. So we were talking about the construction price index, and we weren't going to do an increase. Looking at what I could just quickly total off the top of my head is about a hundred and ten million dollars in unfunded projects. And there's also a lot of maintenance stuff that needs to be done as well, just especially from this year with all the rains and everything that we've had is just wreak wreak havoc on a lot of our infrastructure. I would almost want to say, though, I want to make sure that we're competitive in our pricing to attract businesses to be here in Evans. I'm almost want to say, maybe we should take a look at about maybe increasing the cost in that, and that way, some of that growth that's coming in can offset helping to pay for all of these maintenance projects and all these infrastructure projects as well. I don't know what that number would be, but it's just something I'm throwing around, considering all the unfunded projects we have and everything. Also, looking at the waste management, we're talking about the refuge there. Thank you for letting everybody know about the fees and everything and how that waste management's got millions and millions of dollars. I wonder if we can convince them to spend some money, send out a mailer to residents and go, hey, you know, trash overage, if you do this, this is how much it costs. If you do that, that's how much this has cost. And this is, it's not the city, this is what we're charging. That way, they understand, because I'm sure you and your staff get a lot of complaints, why am I being charged this? It's not really, we're charging, it's Waste Management passing that along. Maybe work with them and get something out there, some education piece to them regarding that, but there's just a couple of thoughts I have on that.
Yeah, absolutely, and thanks for the thoughts on the the WM charges. Our our commitment with them has been that we're a partner to want to do the best for the environment and our community and everything else. And so any materials that they've sent our way, we've been happy to to pass it out. But they also want us to, you know, continue the conversation about recycling in our community and whether there's benefits that people might not be taking advantage of and participating in. So as we continue to work with them on the recycling piece, we'll make sure that we do the the contamination and overage and communication too.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a question. Just curiosity sake. Oh, sorry. Thank you. How much longer do we have on the waste management contract, just for curiosity?
We have two more years after the current.
More years. So if we were going to look for, you know, maybe go out for some RFPs for other service, when would be a good time to start? Is it six months before the end of the contract, a year?
It's probably closer to a year. I'd imagine that a new company would need, you know, nine months to to respond, to spin up enough bins and trucks and and resources to service our community. So we would probably, we'd probably start early in twenty seven to make sure we have that next contract secured for whoever that person or that company might be.
Okay, and I'm not saying Okay, and I'm not saying we need to, I'm just curious for, just get it in my mind to get it set, to think about for next year. And I, I was looking at the no change to the system development fees for the construction as well. And part of my mind is happy about that for next year because I know what's coming for me. But I know we need to look at the community as a whole. I don't know where everybody else's thoughts are. I know you said you looked, was it in Denver and it was like point zero one percent or something?
Right.
But again, they also have different income revenue streams and a lot more businesses. But I've got that in my mind now, so thank you.
Sure.
Right, Councilmember Neil?
And I'm going to assume that we got our billing issue with Waste Management satisfied to your, to your satisfaction.
We have a, we have a great, a great current contract with Waste Management. And again, they're, they're affording the community the opportunity to do the bundle recycling and trash service. So yeah, we're very happy with the, the current structure and opportunities.
I would caution you, some of that discussion was
Privileged.
Privileged.
Anyone else?
Are you finished? Or do you want to continue? Okay, I echo what was said. I do agree, I think we definitely need to speak to WM and see if they can help supply all the leaflets and things for us. Because I mean, that's a partnership, right? When you come to a municipality, that's one of the perks, like you get to help us advertise and do the outreach for you. Going to the refuse fund, I know you discussed and mentioned things with Curtis and numbers and what have you. Last year it was one twenty. Are we, is that, with this budget of one twenty for twenty twenty six, would that provide the two days for spring and fall? And then would that mean that one day gets charged? Or can we have one free and then the second one at a charge? What does that look like with the one twenty?
Would that, those are the pieces we don't have identified yet. So once Curtis has total cost for what, what the event costs for both days, then I think we'll have a better representation of the true cost of the event.
Do we have twenty, twenty, twenty-three numbers?
Yes, which
Was one twenty?
Which is what Curtis presented at some of the first initial conversations. So we don't have any further information for decisions at this point. It really is a placeholder in the budget to make sure that we have at, at a minimum, the same level budgeted for, for next year. And then if council wants to at a future discussion, talk about changing that, then you would have the opportunity to, to do that. We can always come back and make changes to the budget if we need to.
Yeah, I think it's also important to remember that from twenty twenty-three to now, the scope of that, the scope, scope of that program has changed quite a bit. And so once Curtis, once we have that fall program, that fall event, we can run some numbers and refine that and bring it back to council.
Yeah, I would definitely like for that to come back and not to be forgotten. And the reason why is because we don't have all the information today, because it is a budget. And you typically want that information to make a decision on it. And so I don't want it to go on the wayside and it to be forgotten. So I definitely want to put a tab on this to come back and see what those numbers are. So then we can make a decision at that point on this, just because I think that's important for the city. And then going back to unfunded projects, you know, it says, I saw seventy, you must have added something else.
There was one that was seventy, I think there was another one that said forty. I could have been, I could have been mistaken.
You're right.
Yeah, you're correct. Okay, that's why I'm like, I must have missed something, which is totally okay. Yes, thank you for that number. But I know we have slated a, a meeting to be able to prioritize and see what those things are. So based off that, I guess truly understanding and seeing which, and again, it's hard to say because I know there's unfunded projects, but it would be nice to also find or see with those like already prioritized to see, hey, like this is what we have, but these are pressing and this is the funding that's out there for it. Granted, ideally that would be the nice thing to do. But I also would like to come back to that and see
Strategic retreat.
Well, yeah, but I, when, when is this going to happen? This strategic?
In the strategic retreat, you're right, Mayor, so
And yes, and that's what I'm saying, I know it's going to come, I just, granted, we're talking about this before that. I would have loved to admit the opposite, but you know.
Oh, you and me both. If all of the inputs were in front of us for us to make a budget and, and have all of that, it
And so I guess, you know, granted, this clearly is going to be an amendment to that, I'm hoping. Because I, I'm hoping to be able to see, to at least bring that number down. Not, obviously we can't bring it down substantially, but at least somewhat. So just looking at that as well. I do appreciate also like really being cautious about, you know, kind of with the increases just because especially with the refuse, we did increase it substantially last year. And I don't want that for, for our community. Regarding the RFP for WM, I know the last time that we did the RFP, we did, we did put it out to bid and we had two bids. It was like Republic and then it was WM, WM ended up winning the contract. I don't know if there's more out there now, hopefully. So there's an ability to get more people in and I don't know, an ability to change things up a little bit. Um, what else is there, I think? And then for storm and drain, drainage systems? I think I'm, I'm set. I, I feel like I have more questions and it pertains to our strategic plan. And so it's flip flopped. So I, I may have, we may have to do some amendments later.
Councilmember Delaney?
Go ahead. So with the strategic planning process, I'm going to send you guys an email, but tentatively mark down October fourth for that council strategic planning session. I'll send you a calendar invite, so it's on your, on your calendar. But that'll be the opportunity for the city council to come together and really start having those initial conversations about the future. Where do you want to take the city over the next three to five years as we talk about the strategic plan? And then from that, we will, we will likely schedule individual council member discussions with our planning consultant to get, you know, individualized input for the plan. And so, but, but the first meeting will be October fourth. And that's far enough out there to get us through the budget process, but then also provide some information or provide some time to get some information put together on that.
Kind of like we did about five years ago.
Yeah, I, I remember that. And typically we, we approve our budget like mid-October, right? And so if we do this the fourth, that means we have an opportunity. Can we do like a little small, like, like, we can't?
No, you have to, you have to, the entire budget has to be presented before council, before October fifteenth per our charter.
What day does that fall on?
Saturday.
Saturday.
Okay. That's after our meeting, right?
Ours is the second.
Largely.
Actually, it isn't. Our first meeting is the sixth. The sixth of October, oh, I'm sorry, I'm in twenty twenty-six.
Councilmember Delaney?
The seventh, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First question, I'm just a little confused. We made that tiered system kind of as an encouragement for people to try to conserve water and so on and so forth. So I guess my question is, is why then when it comes to the non-potable, do we do the exact opposite? And we actually incentivize people that, hey, if you've already used one acre, you may as well use five? That to me seems a little strange.
It's a good question. I'm not sure I have the answer for that. With the other rates even, you know, our base rate and our potable rate and the non-potable that per thousand gallons, the consultants that did the rate study looked at, you know, the total cost of providing that system and backing out based on the, the classifications of users and types of users. And so that never came up as a, as an option, nor did we necessarily pose the question. So I'm not sure I have an answer for it, for your question today, but it's something that I can put on the radar with Ty and Justin as we look at the future water plans and kind of make sure that we
Okay.
Answer for that going forward.
Sorry, just stuck out of me.
Oh, thank you for the question.
If we, okay. You said that we are, we have about four million dollars set aside for wastewater treatment plant for the kind of like long-term need things, okay? So you compared that to when we did that just last week for, two weeks ago for the police station. I guess my concern is, what is the point of buying parts? If we don't even know if we can fund the full project yet?
Fair question. And I think it's the four million dollars, we won't be buying things tomorrow, right? We're still finalizing that design for the, the expansion of the plant. We'll know more specifically as we get to that endpoint, get to a hundred percent design, what those needs are. We're also working with SRF, we're working with other funding sources to figure out how we at this point piece together that funding strategy. So all these things are happening kind of collectively at the same timeframe. So no, we definitely won't, we'll be buying things before we know how we can pay for, for the, the total cost of the project to your, to your point. I appreciate the, the cautionary note. That's fair.
Yeah, so with that, I believe it's September sixteenth, we will have a city council work session to go over the current, the thirty percent plan for the wastewater treatment plan. Our consultants from A to S will be here to go over that thirty percent plan and, and then provide a glimpse of where we're going, gather some feedback between that thirty percent to one hundred percent plan. So there's still a lot of decisions to be made, fair point. Both points are, are good points. I'm trying to think back to the, to the discussions we had a year ago about non-pot. I'm drawing a blank right now, but I'll, I'll see if I can go through my notes and find some more information on that non-pot rate structure for you.
Thank you. And then final question. So slide twenty, storm drainage capital. This is where Ali saw the seventy million, but there is the extra forty million in a different fund. But so you say capital projects identify, to be identified and re-prioritized after completion of, and then the two things. So if we're still identifying capital projects, that seventy is a floor. We have no idea what the ceiling is.
Absolutely. The same could be said probably for all three enterprise funds.
Okay, thank you.
Ties nodding in the audience, thank you.
Councilmember Farr, good.
Where's the forty?
I don't have a whole lot to say, other than I was very much in agreement with Mayor Clark about Waste Management mailings. That's the first thought that came to mind to me was not only do I support a twenty percent administrative fee to process those fees and do that, but you know, could we even tack on more or have Waste Management just pay for those communications? I know a lot of people just aren't even aware. There, I've got neighbors I know, I see, you know, Amazon boxes sticking out of their trash can. And so they're, not only are they not recycling, but they're getting, they're paying extra fees to throw away cardboard. And people are just busy, they've got kids, they've got families, it's a working community. So definitely as much education and things we can do there would be great. And other than that, I was here at the council meeting last year when you guys doubled the wastewater or the stormwater rates. And I could tell that seemed like a stressful thing and I was supportive of it then, I'm supportive of it now. And we didn't have a single resident come in here and complain about that, I don't think, to my knowledge. So I think we're on the right track. Like those things have to happen and I, I don't think it's quite as big and scary to talk about it as long as we're staying on track and making these incremental increases and maybe a little bit more each year. I think if I could start a binge, thank you.
Great conversation, great questions. I like the presentation, I don't have any questions.
That's easy enough.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Oh, I just want to get back, since our council meeting is on the seventh, are we able to kind of go over the entire budget based off the conversations with the strategic plan?
Probably, I would say not, that's a lot of information that we would gather.
Well, we can make an amendment prior to the next time.
Wasn't that why we're chopping this up into small segments? We don't need to redo the entire?
Well, not the entire, just go over like the specific ones that we, because there's certain ones that we're like tabbing that we may discuss at the strategic retreat or strategic plan date, and then we can update.
So the first meeting on the seventh will be a public hearing, which means it will already have been noticed.
Okay, thank you. Worth a shot.
Great, thank you, Jackie. Thank you to your team for putting all that together for us, we really appreciate it, getting near the end, so. Chief, welcome. All right, our next item is the authority of Colorado municipalities to license and tax marijuana businesses. Turn it over to staff.
Yes, Mayor, council, if you recall back a couple of months ago, we had an initial discussion about both marijuana, retail marijuana sales within the city limits, but also speed cameras at various areas throughout the community. So one of the first things that when Chief Darlin was, was on boarded, that we started talking about was, was just that, bringing this topic back up, providing the city council with more information, maybe fill in some of the gaps from the last conversation on both topics, both the marijuana and the speed cameras. Chief has gone through and, and has prepared a considerable amount of information for you. I think this is going to be a very productive discussion, but with that, I'll turn it over to Chief and let him get started.
Good evening, Mayor and council. If I can get the clicker to work, I'll start here. So our purpose tonight, our focus is just to provide city council with as much information as possible on the revenue generation through licensing of marijuana sales in Evans. As you know, under Colorado revised statute, municipalities are authorized to license retail marijuana businesses within their jurisdiction. It focuses on local government's ability to license, regulate retail marijuana, so long as their rules don't conflict with the state statutes, right? So the frame, the framework that the state has set up, it, it requires that marijuana businesses hold both a state level license and a retail or a local municipal license, right? And that really, what that does is it provides the opportunity for local municipalities to really control whether or not marijuana sales within their community is something that they want to authorize and engage in within their communities, right? So local taxation rates and licensing processes are kind of determined through local ordinance, right? It's through either local ordinance or you guys, or you guys put it on the ballot essentially, right? So you can control the taxing rate and the taxing authority within the municipality along with the state level taxes. And that will equal what the retail sales taxes accrue to within any specific municipality within the state of Colorado. But what it really allows you to do is to control your own environment, your own regulatory environment within your community. When we look at the different type of marijuana licenses, there are all types of licenses, cultivation, delivery, hospitality. But when, what we're really looking at, most, most municipalities are really looking at are stores. And there are two types of stores, right? You have retail sales of marijuana and you have retail sales of medical marijuana. Many of the facilities that you see hold multiple licenses. So you may see a storefront, it holds both a retail marijuana license and a medical marijuana license. It may also hold cultivation licenses as well, if they're in that, in that, you know, business as well. But essentially, when you're looking at local stores, local municipalities, you're looking at retail sales of medical marijuana and retail sale of, of marijuana that's for consumption recreationally. Statewide, we're looking at over two hundred and ninety-three retail licenses, over six hundred and ninety-eight medical licenses throughout the state. Denver has the largest share, two hundred retail and over ninety medical. Colorado Springs jumps next in with about fifty-five retail and over ninety medical. Weld County has a much smaller number of both medical and retail marijuana licenses. So the market in Weld County isn't really oversaturated, very, very large county, not a lot of licenses. I want to say it's fourteen total licenses in Weld County. Some of our communities that are partially in Weld County, example Brighton, example Longmont, all of those licensees are generally in the other county, not Weld County. Brighton has one that is in Weld County as well, but most of those licenses are outside of Weld County specifically. However, while the area of Weld County is not saturated, our more local community starts to get a little bit more saturated, right? Garden City holds four retail and three medical marijuana licenses. Milliken holds one retail license and Fort Collins holds three, I'm sorry, Fort Lupton holds three retail marijuana licenses. uh, retail marijuana licenses. Sorry, what was that?
Alt has two, because they just opened.
Yes, yeah, yeah, and Alt, Alt has a, a few too, that are just recent. Um, currently and historically, Evans prohibits cannabis sales within the city under nine twenty-seven zero one zero. We prohibit the operation of a marijuana cultivation facility, marijuana product manufacturing facility, marijuana testing facilities, and any retail marijuana stores. And that's pretty much been since the inception back in, you know, the early teens for Colorado. Um, when we look at the sales tax revenue, prior to July first of twenty twenty-five, local governments could receive ten percent of the fifteen percent grocery retail marijuana special tax revenue uh, with the state retaining the remaining of that tax. Effective July first, under the new Senate bill twenty-five two sixty-eight, they changed that tax cash fund. Uh, local governments now receive only three point five percent of that fifteen percent grocery retail marijuana tax with the state retaining the ninety-six point five percent of the remaining uh, portion of that tax. So we've significantly decreased what could have been available from that state tax. So you're really going to have to garner revenue through local taxation uh, within the municipality. When we look at monthly marijuana tax revenues, you can see that from inception in twenty fourteen, moving through twenty twenty-one, steady increase in marijuana tax revenues across the, across the state. And then it starts to dip, and it has continuously dipped down, um, pretty, pretty steadily from twenty-one all the way through current date through January of twenty twenty-five, based on the numbers the state has on their revenue site. Um, you can see that in twenty twenty-one, four hundred and twenty-three million dollars plus in tax revenue. And so far, uh, twenty twenty-five, January through June, we're looking at about a hundred and eighteen. So we're seeing pretty close to uh, a fifty percent reduction there in, in potential tax revenue there uh, from marijuana sales. Um, same graph, just a little bit broader breakdown here, uh, where we can go month to month. And then you see the uh, percentage change year over year, uh, in the bottom graph there. When we look at equino- economic development, of course, that's opportu- opportunity, right? It's a po- a possibility for increased revenue. When we're looking at uh, marijuana sales, we got to recognize the value of the increased revenue and make sure we're balancing that against growth and community needs, as well as sustainable community growth, our beautification, beautification efforts and our goals, and then the zoning considerations. And you have perception with the location, you have, you know, zoning and community issues, concerns, you have business impact uh, and the overall city goals. So this equation is, isn't straightforward. It's, it's just not a super straightforward question, right? We just got to look at all the different pieces of the puzzle and decide whether or not it's right for the community, and then if it is right for the community, where does it fit within the community? Because those zoning pieces are going to be critical to the decision-making process. Sorry. Um, so some of the financial considerations, Colorado retail tax fifteen percent, that was on retail only, that has changed. You can see that the bottom there, it is now three point five percent of that fifteen percent. Evans sales tax generally is four point five percent. That can be adjusted, right? That can be, you can, uh, you know, the council can identify a specific tax on marijuana within the community, so it doesn't have to remain the four point five percent. But currently, that's what our rate right now is. Regular Colorado sales tax on medical marijuana is two point nine percent. Um, and that could be adj- adjusted, uh, you can't adjust that specific tax rate, but you can tax medical marijuana as well. Um, so estimated revenue, they really vary based on the following factors, the number of establishments within the community, locations, fees established, additional tax rates, what we adjust our tax rates to be. But you got to consider, when we, when we, when we talk about those things, you've got to consider your focus on there's a fixed number of marijuana uh, um, users. A fixed number of people that are going to travel to our community for those marijuana users. You got to figure, Fort Lupton to the south has three licenses. Uh, Milliken has a license, Garden City has multiple licenses, four establishments, seven different licenses. Um, so fixed number of, of individuals that, you know, are going to uh, en- engage in consumption of marijuana from the different license possibilities. So while Weld County specifically isn't overly um, saturated, our specific area not saturated, but we do have competition within each one of those communities. And any travelers coming to our community uh, would be, we'd be competing against those individuals, right? So our tax rates need to be competitive with those communities, otherwise your customers are going to go where they can get the, their marijuana the cheapest, right? So when you consider tax rates and all of the different uh, available potential revenues through taxing, you still have to remain consistent with the surrounding communities and surrounding businesses in order to uh, compete with them for potential revenue draw. And as you look for Weld County marijuana licenses, as I kind of spoke to earlier, Fort Lupton has three, Garden City has seven total licenses across four establishments. Four retail and three uh, medical, and Milliken, Brighton, uh, both have uh, one retail each. Total of eleven retail licenses and fourteen total licenses uh, across Weld County specifically. So utilizing Evans' current tax rate, this is just a, as an example, right? Four point five percent, the state's share of three point five percent of that fifteen percent uh, retail marijuana tax. Our general tax rate is about eight percent currently, uh, if we were to just use those particular numbers. Basically, there's about eighty thousand dollars of potential revenue and taxes based on every one million dollars in retail sales of marijuana within the city. So again, we go back to that saturation of establishments in the area, significantly affects retail sales. Um, we've got to keep those sales tax rates kind of competitive across all of those jurisdictions. Otherwise, our potential customers will just purchase from another store in a different area. And then we have to focus on the land use and zoning restrictions, regulations and fees that could impact the revenue to be collected in. And all of those are, are policy decisions that the council gets to decis- decide on and how they want to address those pe- particular issues. It's a difficult industry to forecast. I still just read out of Jackie's presentation just a week ago, right? And so you really have to heavily discount uh, the budget estimates as we move forward. And then we could better project it, uh, you know, down the line, once we see real revenue numbers. Um, some of the crime and disorder considerations, right? Diversion in illegal sales, there's always a diversion in illegal sale. Risk of licensed products entering the black markets within the community. Youth access, uh, critical, right? We want to make sure that um, we're not seeing underage sales and sales in proximity to schools, impaired driving. Uh, this is always difficult. Um, we know we have breath tests for alcohol. There is no specific test for cannabis, right? We have to do blood tests on individuals to determine whether or not they're um, utilizing cannabis as a as a substance that intoxicated them while operating a motor vehicle. Um, pub- public consumption disorder, uh, you know, linked to loitering, odor complaints, violations of use and restriction in restricted areas. I mean, that's just people essentially smoking marijuana or utilizing marijuana in public spaces, right? Um, it will, it will happen whether we have licensed establishments within our community or not, but it's a factor we should consider, right? Business crime risk, it's a cash-heavy operation without question, right? So there are, it can attract theft, it can attract robbery. Um, community safety is just kind of that fear of increased nuisance crime around dispensaries, some real, some totally perceived. Um, and then you look at your regulatory compliance, there is a need for strict oversight to prevent fraud, over uh, production and unlicensed activities in and around these particular establishments. So those are concerns that we'll need to make sure we're, we're paying close attention to. And then the increased caseload in the municipal court, especially juvenile cases. Uh, there's a potential there. Um, really early to say what that might be, um, but there, there's obviously a potential to that. Um, so some of the key policy decisions, it's really just this revolving uh, discussion, right? It's a public process, really what allowable establishments and what locations might council consider. Um, what that zoning and land use would look like, um, distances from schools, distances from daycares, distances uh, from shop to shop, right? If you had multiple shops within your community. And then the licensing and regulation process, what does that look like? What fees could we charge? Um, and you know, how arduous do we want to move through that process to make that, uh, you know, business friendly for the community? And then the, the revenue that that generates, and then it just, you know, it's constant maneuvering of, of that process to make sure that we've toned it in and lined it up exactly with what the community uh, is acceptable to and, and what council would like to see as a process. Um, so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you, Chief, for putting this presentation, awesome job on it. Uh, so, um, do you have the specific zonings and where establishments like this would be allowed? Cause if I'm thinking correctly, there really isn't many places that you can put it in Evans. And also looking at a million dollars in retail sales to possibly get eighty thousand dollars in revenue? Just doesn't seem like it's worth the headache in the household, that's just my opinion though, but I, I, if I'm not mistaken, there's, it's pretty limited where we could put it in Evans based on all the laws for zoning and everything, correct?
There are zoning ordinance, there are zoning statutes that, that uh, are applicable to this particular business, right? So um, there are distances between businesses, there are distances from schools, daycare centers. Um, it's not, i- if we had cultivation, there would be different areas that they could cultivate in. But focused, basically, we're looking at um, more the western edge of the city is areas that may have, you know, more areas that could potentially meet our zoning requirements. Cause you do have to be certain distances from the schools and, and from each store uh, throughout the community.
So to go back to, to the thing about uh, daycare centers, does that also include in-home daycare centers? Or is that just licensed?
So if it's a licensed daycare center.
So if it's a license in home, okay, got it. Awesome, thank you. Just no questions?
Um, I have a question, I don't know if anybody knows the answer to. Has anyone ever shown interest in coming to the city of Evans? As um, you know, a seller, retail or medical?
Uh, in the last two and a half years, not to the best of my knowledge.
Okay. And then, um, I know you said Garden City had uh, seven licenses total. Uh, three for um, medical and then four for just recreation. Um, how many of those though are for uh, the same establishment?
Because they have four licensed, they have four establishments that hold all seven of those licenses. So multiple establishments hold both retail and medical marijuana sales.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. And then do you have any numbers or any information on the business crime risks? Um, that's the cash-heavy operations may attract theft or robbery. I was wondering if there were any numbers for that, for any of these surrounding cities like Milliken, uh, Fort Lupton, places like that. Uh, just to ease people's minds or maybe open them up, I'm just curious for that.
At this point, I don't have those specific numbers. I did try to get as much nu- information from Garden City as I could. They were less than, um, they were, actually, I got a lot of information, but I didn't get specific information, right? Garden City uh, is, is probably our best uh, representative, right? It's a very similar community, very close by, we'd be able to see that type of crime uh, uh, data. Uh, Fort Lupton is new in, to the game, their licenses are relatively within the last few years, as is Milliken. So that is a, an area where we would be looking at much more recent information. Specifically, I do not have the crime piece to that, because it's also going to be a very difficult tie. Uh, it's going to be based on proximity or if this, the location was an actual victim of, of a criminal e- event. Um, but to, the broader answer to your question, not specifically. Um, if, if we were to choose to move forward in this, I would absolutely bring that information forward to council, have something to consider in the process.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Have they uh, looked into why this, why the, the sales have dropped off so drastically in the last five years? Or so?
I don't know that I have specific numbers or uh, information on that. I can say anecdotally that many of the states surrounding Colorado have started to loosen the legalization standards around marijuana. So where we would get travelers in from Nebraska and Utah and other adjoining states and even further uh, for sales, uh, some of that has diminished because of the legalization throughout the country. Um, and that's one anecdotal reason, specific data, there isn't any specific data as to why there's been a significant decrease over time. It may just be that leveling off, it started at a certain point, it grew, and then it's kind of coming back to that same point. Um, so it may just be simple, uh, you know, balancing effect over time.
Anything else? Thank you, Chief. Um, so I believe that I saw at one point that they have done studies that show that bringing a marijuana dis- uh, distribu- uh, dispensary, thank you, um, into a area actually doesn't pose any more crime-related problems than a liquor store. Do you know if that's a true statement?
That's a, that's a, from the, from the information that I was able to dev- develop, yes, that's correct. It's, it's very similar to a liquor store type of crime. Uh, the increase in crime or the crime concerns are very similar to a liquor establishment, yes.
So then I guess my question is, I really appreciated this um, presentation. But when we're looking specifically at the crime and disorder considerations, as you point out, we are very well satur- saturated with um, dispensaries around here. The difference is, those people are paying Garden City's taxes, which is why Eighth Avenue had, went from pretty much a hellhole to a very nice centerpiece in the middle of their city. So, congrats to them, by the way.
Of course, congratulations.
But, um, but uh, ultimately, we're getting all of this and just giving uh, Garden City our taxes, is that not true? Because, I mean, I know people are going from Evans to Garden City, spending money in, in Garden City, and then coming back and smoking in Evans.
From an anecdotal perspective, yes, there are, I'm sure, I'm sure we have Evans residents who are moving to Garden City, Fort Lupton, Brighton, or whatever location, Milliken, to purchase uh, marijuana, and those tax benefits are being, you know, uh, absorbed by those communities, without question. Um, some of the, some of the crime and disorder considerations, like youth access and impaired driving. Of course, someone who utilizes marijuana in, in even Garden City or in, in Greeley could operate a motor vehicle through, through uh, you know, Evans. So those considerations are, are present. You know, they're not, they're not something that isn't currently uh, within the city. But you would likely, just anecdotally, see increases in those type of concerns within Evans. Should we bring some of those uh, dispensaries into the community, right? You would, you would have more of those concerns, especially in and around school, youth sales, ex- access, all of those different pieces. Um, from an anecdotal perspective, it is super difficult to identify very clearly and very delineated to say, okay, this, it has created this, unless we can tie a direct line. Um, so yes, we're going to see some of those issues regardless. Um, it's, it's a valid concern. Um, and there's no way around it, so we have to basically, uh, you know, work through those processes. It's not um, one of the bigger, um, you know, it, it's a factor that we would want to consider, that you would want to consider in the process of determining whether or not you want to license marijuana in the, in the city, right? Um, along with the fact that the state reduced that tax potential tax gain from that ten percent of that fifteen percent, down to three and a half percent. With that being renewed again in twenty twenty-seven, January twenty twenty-seven, they're going to review that again. That's part of the actual statute that they wrote uh, under, under that provision this past year. So, um, that could drop to zero, um, or some percentage between zero and three point five. So the tax revenue, I think from that perspective, council needs to look at that from what are the sales tax uh, potentials from Evans licensing provisions, to really see what that's going to collect. And then we would need to utilize the other jurisdictions to use, to really be competitive, right? Because if, if, if we have a taxing body that's going to tax, you know, seven, five, ten percent more for the purchase, and I can go to Garden City, you know, a mile away and pay less, then that's generally what people do. We see it all the time in every shopping category. Gas taxes are probably one of the biggest examples. You can see gas stations pop up on the suburb, on the border of, of a suburb. And gas taxes are less in the next county, and people go buy gas in the next county because the taxes are less. So those are the issues that will need to be really looked at carefully as you progress through that process.
So do we, going back to then that? So do we, going back to that and that, do we know what the tax rates are in Garden City and Milliken specifically?
I, I don't have Milliken's or Garden City's. I tried to get revenue data and they were less than, than happy to share. I can get general, but not individual store.
So it'd be their sales tax plus their three point five percent tax?
Correct.
Plus, no, plus whatever they put on. You can add extra sales tax.
That's correct.
That is correct. So that would really change the eighty thousand dollars per million, depending on what that number is. That's why I was hoping to have that.
Potentially, it could.
So then, final question, because you're my subject matter expert. Would you, as the chief of police, be concerned if we started bringing dispensaries into Evans? Do you, would that cause you heartache as the head of the police department?
It wouldn't cause me a tremendous amount of heartache. What it would cause me is to want to really be part of that decision-making process on the zoning and all of the different pieces that go into, into that process. It is going to be similar to liquor stores, that's really what it's going to be. It's liquor stores are, are probably the best comparison as far as crime and conditions are, are related to the establishment itself, right? So huge heartache, no. We have, you know, almost thirteen years of data now across the state to show that it's minor to moderate, depending on location and, and, you know, the concerns range across, you know, a myriad of, of potential crimes and many of which I kind of already described, right? So significantly concerned, no. From the perspective of, you know, community caretaking and just having that community that is, is welcoming to children and to, you know, the family atmosphere type of a community, really building family in the community. I'm not a proponent of marijuana stores, marijuana dispensaries for that reason alone. It's youth potential. It's, in my opinion, and there is still data to support this, cannabis is a gateway drug. So it potentially has, you know, side effects that are beyond what you can see in the immediate future. So it's a, it's a soft no concern, but it's still somewhat of a concern.
Okay, well, thank you for a wonderful presentation, and I'm done.
Councilmember Fair, country?
My only question is, what does regulation look like? And by that, I think what I mean is, is Evans on the hook for regulation? Would we have to hire a full-time inspector? Would that be under the police department? Would it be under our administrative body? And what would trigger that? Because currently, we don't have any dispensaries. So if we just get one dispensary and they're selling one million a year, generating eighty thousand tax revenue, and we're spending a hundred and seventy-five thousand on an inspector, that's, so, I mean, I'm sure we probably have some other options as well. Maybe an IGA with Garden City or something who already probably has those personnel. Just what does that look like all around?
So first, I'll, I'll start with this. One million dollars in revenue, we have very few businesses in Evans right now that sell one million dollar in, in retail sales of anything, right? Only our larger retail establishments. It's not none, right? There are, there are numerous, I, I did look into the numbers, but it's, it's not, we don't have seventy places that sell a million dollars worth of revenue in, in the city, you know, on an annual basis, right? So, you know, what those potential revenue numbers are is likely well below one million dollars, right? And then multiple venues within the area, doesn't change the number of, of the retail sales because there's a fixed amount of users within a specific general geographical area. As far as the question regarding regulation, yeah, it's on us. Like, it's on council to identify all of the regulation standards, provided that they do not conflict with the state statute on our regulation practices, right? We can establish fees, we can establish taxes, we can establish the zoning areas. Again, based on, so the state doesn't tell us it must be one thousand feet from a school. State says that we can regulate how far from a school, how far from a daycare, how far from another facility, right? The city gets to regulate that actual distance, right? Because maybe a city like Garden City, it's very compact, it's tight. So maybe they shorten their regulation, maybe Evans makes the regulations larger, right? I don't want two stores within, you know, a thousand feet of each other, right? You could, you guys control that, the council controls that, either through your own passage of ordinances or putting it on a ballot and asking the community and the, and the voting members to decide for the community, right? As far as the actual enforcement, the state has a governing body over marijuana that will do much of the enforcement strategies. But the police department is, of course, going to have to also enforce those regulations as well, right? Especially the local regulations that are specific to Evans. So it's a kind of a hodgepodge of all the above. But much of the regulation is created by council and/or the voters, so we control it.
And then they need for the additional officers to do that too?
Depending on the different, depending on the number of licenses allowed, depending on the regulations put in place and the behavior and conduct of the licensee. That's, that's the depending factor on whether or not it would be exceptionally time-consuming or, you know, regular practice.
Yeah, I think really, that's my question, is if, if we legalize it and have no interest from the business community in doing it, you know, do we, do we need to hire an inspector when we legalize it and we have one that is basically doing nothing? Or like, when that first business comes along, would we then, in tandem, be looking to hire that, that role? I guess I'm just not really clear on how, even like our liquor stores and, and like bars are, do our officers?
So we do that.
Yeah, you go into, go into those establishments.
And that's how it would be to start. I would say that the police department would be the ones that would be doing that regulation and be doing that, those inspections. Unless we saw such a significant increase in, in the amount of time that the law, the police department needed to spend on that endeavor, that would determine whether or not we would want to, you know, create another, you know, individual who managed that or hire additional police officers to manage that. But it would be incumbent on the city to do some of those regulation, regulatory features, right? And we do the liquor now, right? We do the licensing pieces, we do the inspections. So I guess to answer your question is, yeah, we would do it and then as needed, we would add additional resources as necessary.
Okay, thank you.
We get to Councilmember Crabtree and then you, Councilmember Delaney?
Great presentation, loved it, it's in-depth, detailed. I look to the lens of manufacturing, the liquor industry to talk to your point. The state has the level of inspection. So we'll first talk about that excise tax, that fifteen percent, that's what pays the state to come in and takes care of that. So even if that excise tax goes away, that fifteen percent, we're still generating, that business is still generating tax revenue. And that's what I'm looking at, the tax revenue, those fees. I'm looking at it through the lens of, this is a business that's generating revenue that, just like a liquor store, would generate revenue that would go into the general ledger for the city of Evans. I don't see an additional burden, just like another liquor store in Evans wouldn't create additional need for additional police officers. Compliance from the state would be taking burden upon the state. So even if we lost the three point five percent, I still see it as the loss of the excise tax. Of course, we would want the police department to be part of the zoning and regulations, just like they would be part of the liquor store side of it. We're looking for additional revenue sources. We have grown up, we're no longer bootleggers. This is the same conversation we had when we were talking about the production of alcohol and tobacco. This is just another source of things that people want. And just like Delaney had mentioned, our residents are going elsewhere. They're taking their tax, or they're taking their money and paying other municipalities' tax revenue. I would like to see that tax revenue brought back into our city. I also agree that the data doesn't support an, an increase in crime, or else I would not be supportive of this. You're correct, there is a hotspot in this area of retail, but it's not market saturated and allow market demand to dictate that. But we're not opening this business. We're allowing business to come into this. We are just changing municipal code. Allow the entrepreneur to make that decision, we're not making that decision. And at the end of the day, we work for the citizens. They're going to pass a vote and they're going to vote if they want this or not. And I think it's our due diligence to at least look through the perspective of, is this something that can help residents with additional tax revenue? That we don't have to ask for more mills, that we can somehow generate additional revenue that we don't, we can supply. I mean, maybe, yes, we make eighty thousand dollars more a year. It's better than not making eighty thousand dollars more a year because it's not going to Garden City or Milliken.
Well, that's if they sell a million dollars.
I don't care if we make fifty thousand. We're, we're letting the tax revenue and the fees go somewhere else. And so I'd like to at least let the, the residents at least vote and see if they want. I don't want to be Greeley when Garden City was the only place that allowed liquor to be sold. And then Greeley finally woke up and allowed liquor stores. I want to at least give that opportunity for that revenue stream to be there.
Well, I mean, I, I would say, I mean, I, I personally am not in, in favor of this as well, I, I have.
And I am, and I would like to pass it to the voters.
And I would say, if we were going to consider, this shouldn't be something exactly that, it shouldn't be a council decision. This should be put out to the voters and let them make that. Because when we've explored this before in the past and we've, we, we've had meetings on it, overwhelming majority of the individuals showed up and said, no. We thought the RV ordinance was bad, that was just as many people, if not more, saying, we don't want this anywhere in Evans. So if this is something that we were to consider, then I would say it has to go out to a vote. It shouldn't be a council decision, it should be a voter decision.
Right, I think we're all talking about making it a voter's decision, I don't want to make that decision. But I did want to make one point to your market comment. Somebody earlier, I believe it was Mayor Protam, asked if anybody had come to the city and asked, do you, has anybody come and said, hey, can we, you know? And I think my answer to that is, on slide number two, or seven, we literally tell them, no, you can't. So why are you even going to come and ask? So, but I think, I mean, when I've been talking to people about taxes, one of the first things I've heard from many people, not all people, but from many people is, why don't you just allow us to sell weed?
And we're also a younger generation, and six, seven years ago, my parents are also against it.
Councilmember Johnson?
So, I, I'm a big proponent on, you know, diverse revenues, you know, diversifying our revenue and we've getting creative. You know, this has came in the past and it, it was, you know, we were proposing it to our community and they spoke. And so we went that path. But I do agree that it needs to come back and provide the option. And I, I, and I also feel that it should be open to the person to be able to come in and, you know, state, you know, if it were to pass one day, come and create an establishment, dependent on whatever parameters we place. And I think for me, it's always been, you know, I do, you know, have young children, I, you know, I am for the youth, always advocating for that. But when you see like the data, for example, Garden City doesn't report because they're under ten thousand in population, so they're two hundred and fifty-seven in population. But then it also states, and it, like, data in June of twenty, what is it, twenty twenty-five shows a fourteen percent reduction in that vicinity, like, if you look at Greeley's kind of data. And so it looks like it's, there's a downward trend. So, and as you mentioned, the information that you've provided with, you know, kind of comparing it to a liquor store, for me, that gives me some ease in realizing that it's not a big threat to the community. Because that's always, safety first, always. But at the same time, we need to diversify our revenue as well and provide the option. And then again, ultimately, our voters will indicate which path they would like to go.
And you also talked about it being a gateway drug. I think marijuana is terrible for anything, any, I mean, it's a proven fact that under eighteen, it is not good for the development of the brain, nor is alcohol. And I produce alcohol, that's my job. And so, for those of us who don't know, twenty years, but we're, we're not supposed to be sitting here dictating who gets to, who drinks and who smokes. That's the entrepreneur's job. So if I have beer in my refrigerator, I'm the parent, not this board, so.
I mean, I, I think it's settling for sure, something that goes out to the voters, I agree with all of that. My, my biggest concern is I don't think we're going to get the revenue that we think we're going to get. And it's not going to definitely help offset any mill levy increase that we're going to need. It may be a very small portion of sales tax dollars that we get, but it's not going to be the big end-all be-all of our financial needs. But again, I'm not a proponent of it, however, I would let the voters decide.
So when, when you consider, when the board considers or when, when the council considers or the voters consider, a couple of things that can, that are part of that consideration is the number of licenses within the city, right? That can be part of your decision-making or it can be the voter's decision, right? We certainly don't want to fill the city with liquor license, marijuana license facilities and pawn shops, right? That's not the community we're looking for, right? So that's part of the consideration process. If it was sent, you know, to the voters, it's, okay, you can determine, you want us to open up marijuana sales in the city, but we're still going to limit the number of licenses, the zoning pieces, all of those different factors in, in determining what that does. And with those pieces, that potentially limits revenue, right? The number of stores within the, within the community limits revenue.
And we did look into that before because it was a thousand, I think that the radius was a thousand feet. And so based off that at the time, it did limit the number. But again, I think those parameters are necessary as well. And then, but ultimately, opening the ability, you know, for voters to say whether that's the direction they go.
But then there's also application fees and buy-in fees.
And I'm also going to point out that you made a great point. Probably the most likely place this is going to happen is on the west side.
That's what I was going to say.
And so what that means is, I, I actually kind of disagree with the final thing you just said about if, you know, you limit it to two stores, that's going to limit your revenues. Because again, that doesn't change how many people are using marijuana. And the thing is, if we were to build somewhere on the, if somebody were to come into Evans and build on the west side, you would not only get people coming in from Windsor, Loveland and, and Johnstown, you'd probably get every single person who uses cannabis from Thirty-Fifth Avenue West. You know, I mean, so I, I just, I agree, it's not going to be a huge amount of money, but it's just, let's let the voters decide. Because I, I, going back to Jeff's point, or sorry, Councilmember Crabtree's point, you know, Greeley hamstrung itself for years because it wouldn't allow for the further sale of alcohol.
So I guess the question being said, it sounds like a majority of everyone wants to, in front, I'll get back to you, I know you want to say something. Councilmember Neil, just want to say with that, a majority looks like, take it to the voters, let the voters decide. The question would be is when, we're not going to make November's ballot. November, November twenty-six would be the, the next election after this one for the sales tax. Unless you do a special election in April, but the earliest after that would be November twenty-six.
I think we could discuss that more in our strategic.
Right. I'm just saying, just, just food for thought.
Yeah, so since we're not going to make this.
And we don't have to rush this.
Saying like even in November next year, this will give us time to see what the parameters are and. How it works for other communities, how it might work for us. That'll give us just over a year to figure all that out and then put it on the ballot, let people decide like you said.
And let their constituents really come out and talk to us. And then we'll get a real pulse of what our community truly wants.
Okay, I guess we're out of free fall mode. Since, uh, Councilmember Crabtree, uh. Brought up some things, uh, I'm going to bring up my thing that he hates. And that is the, uh, study I found when we first looked at this. Uh, that showed that for every dollar of tax revenue you, uh, inherit from the people. You also inherit, uh, four dollars worth of, uh, increased, uh, police. And emergency medical services. So put that out there. I guess I'll have to dig that study out for you to look at again, Jeff.
I also looked at that study and that study was debunked with the new data. So that data was old data, the new data has changed it.
I gotta say, I've also heard that ninety seven percent of statistics are made up on the spot, so.
All right, anything else for the good of this discussion? All right. Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. Great presentation.
Great presentation.
All right, and our next and last item is the automated vehicle identification systems. Chief, turn it back over to you.
Uh, good evening. Again, so this one's a little bit different topic, right? Trying to provide council with a key insight in the implementation of automated vehicle identification systems, commonly known as Avis. Uh, for speed enforcement, uh, within the city. Colorado revised statute governs, uh, the use of automated speed enforcement. And this has been updated in the last couple of years, um, in the past. In order to utilize automated vehicle identification systems to write speeding citations within a city. Uh, you had to have a manned operator operating that automated visuals, uh, automated vehicle identification system. Where in twenty twenty three, the legislature removed that requirement, making this far more. Reachable for communities, far more, uh, cost effective for communities to utilize, uh, within their jurisdictions. Um, so the penalty is assigned to the registered owner of the vehicle. It's not assigned to the driver. Uh, and the penalty is civil, not criminal. Uh, and it does not incur points on a vehicle operator's license. So if, uh, Avis technology were used within the city, we're not actually citing a driver for criminal violation. We're citing a registered owner for a civil violation. There are a lot of legal requirements for this process, right? Um, and I'm, I'm going to go over most of them, but you'll, you'll get a good idea of what it takes to do this, right? So you have to adopt an ordinance. The city itself has to adopt an ordinance. That authorizes the use of Avis systems to detect traffic violations within the city. There are signage requirements. Proper signage must be posted to notify public of the AVI system's presence. And it must be at least three hundred feet prior to the device that's going to be utilized to capture the speed. Um, notifications and coordination with the Department of Transportation for state highways. Any municipality that wants to put an Avis system on a state highway has to notify the Department of Transportation. And coordinate a special use permit before installing any devices or signage on a state highway. Public announcement. The, the statute mandates that the municipality publicly announce the implementation of the system on its website for at least thirty days before use. In addition to that, once in use, there needs to be the first thirty days of that. Once it's installed, the first thirty days post installation can only issue warning citations. You cannot actually issue a citation for the speeding violation. Um, and then designated automobile vehicle identification corridors have to be created. Um, and I'll go over that a little bit later on what that looks like and what that means. Um, and then reports on citations and revenue must be reported, uh. Essentially annually, it's not super specific in the statute, but it needs to be reported and you must publish it. And disclose the number of citations and the review, revenue generated by the systems. Um, and then there are prohibited areas. Obviously, it doesn't affect us because we don't have a federal interstate highway running through the middle of Evans, so. But they are prohibited on the federal interstate highways. Potential locations, right? So residential neighborhoods and residential neighborhoods are defined in this ordinance, in this statute. As any block with on which a majority of improvements along both sides of the street. Are residential dwellings and the speed limit of thirty five miles an hour or less. So we can utilize Avis systems on residential locations simply by passing an ordinance and allowing Avis. Systems within the community, right? Um, you can put them in school zones under that same ordinance. You can put it in a maintenance construction zone or repair zone when work is actively being conducted, right? So you can, you can't write citations outside of the time that there are people there working on the roadway. If you have it in a maintenance or construction zone. Streets bordering municipal parks, you can put it in those areas anytime. Designated Avis corridors need to be established independently within the ordinance, either by an ordinance of its own. Or under resolution. So designated Avis corridors can be created anywhere within the city. Provided we have some data to support speeding, traffic crash, safety and or citizen complaints within the past five years. All right, so corridors are independent of residential neighborhoods, they're independent of school zones, they're independent of maintenance zones. And they're indeco- independent of streets bordering municipal parks. That needs a secondary piece within the ordinance that says, hey, we have a resolution saying that this is a corridor. And we're going to use Avis to enforce speed within it. You need some level of data. I assure you, there's nowhere within the city that we don't have some level of data that would support speeding, traffic crashes within the past five years. And then a state highways after coordinating with the Department of Transportation. So anything that isn't truly controlled by Evans, isn't in Evans Road, we could use state highways. We just got to coordinate to do it. Um, key considerations, right? Community impact, enhancing traffic safety and reducing speeding violations. Um, there is a lot of legal policy and framework that's part of this, right? We got to pass an ordinance. We would have to identify speed corridors if that's what we chose to do. Uh, there's technol- technology and infrastructure evaluating camera placement, signage and different vendor options. And different potential tools. There are a multitude of tools that can be utilized, uh, for this. And you got to look at cost and funding programs are generally designed to pay for themselves, at least through the revenue generation. Um, but there are lease and or purchase of equipment that's necessary. So ongoing expenses and contracts that the city would need to enter into. Um, and then the implementation timeline, establishing kind of a phased rollout strategy and what does that look like and where? Like what locations do we want to identify? So again, looking at Evans locations, I did a little bit of work on this just to kind of give you guys some general information, right? So Thirty Fifth Street, uh, southbound traffic within the thirty five hundred block and Forty Seventh Avenue, southbound traffic within the thirty five hundred block. I put speed trailers out there to get us some data, just so you guys could see some data information on it, right? Our residential neighborhoods, I already defined that for you. It can be utilized anywhere within the community as long as it meets the residential neighborhood. Streets bordering municipal parks can be used anywhere on a street that borders a municipal park. And then those designated corridors, uh, based on data over the past five years. Traffic analysis for Forty Seventh Avenue, we put the trailer out there for fourteen days. You can see that the speed limit's thirty five miles an hour. Um, you can see that thirty nine thousand six hundred and fifty nine vehicles traveled that corridor. This is just one direction of travel for that timeframe. This is southbound traffic, right? Eighty fifth percentile speed, forty one point seven miles per hour. That's telling us that eighty five out of every one hundred vehicles that traveled that corridor are traveling at forty one point seven miles per hour. Or lower. Okay, so that's the eighty fifth percentile speed for that street. Excessive speeding, there were one thousand two hundred and eight vehicles that were traveling between forty six and fifty miles an hour. That's a really important number because under this system, you can only write citations. When the speed exceeds ten miles an hour over the speed limit. So ten miles an hour or over for the first offense. Second and subsequent offenses, it can be less. Okay, but the first offense that you issue for this, it cannot be less than ten miles an hour over the speed limit. Two hundred and eighty three vehicles traveling at fifty one to fifty five, ninety two vehicles traveling, uh, fifty six to sixty. And seventy nine crazy people driving absolutely ridiculous speeds. Um, in that area, right? Now, mind you, this data is not perfect. This is also data that's being utilized by a, a speed trailer. Big flash and sign telling you your speed. It's not, it's, it's perfectly visible. Nobody's missing this trailer as they drive by it, right? Um, better speed studies would be done covertly. We would use covert surveillance, uh, radars that would give us better speed studies. And we'd have, um, stronger data. Uh, but I used what we had just to give us a picture, a framework of what we're doing, right? Um, so you can see that that's a significant amount of citations. It's six hundred, sixteen hundred and sixty two citations over a two week period. Um, for that particular location, just one direction, one direction in that particular location. Um, now, tickets are maximized. You can only charge forty dollars for these citations, right? You can't charge the municipal fee for, um, any of the court fees or any of that. This is straight forty dollars. It's a civil violation. The tickets are mailed. It's all done automated, right? It does take a police officer or someone within the city that has to verify each citation. And I'll go through that when I talk about some of the software that's provided. When we look at the second location. I lost my clicker. There we go. So Thirty Fifth Avenue, um, and it's Thirty Fifth, uh. Avenue from thirty five hundred block, it's virtually the exact same location, southbound traffic just moved to Thirty Fifth, right, instead of Forty Seventh. Total vehicle count over fourteen days, one hundred and six thousand six hundred and ninety seven. The eighty fifth percentile speed slightly slower at forty one point one miles an hour. Again, eighty five out of every one hundred vehicles traveling at or below forty one point one miles an hour when they traverse that street. Excessive speeding, thirteen hundred and fifty six violators at ten miles an hour or over, eleven miles an hour or over. Two hundred and eighty seven at fifty one to fifty five, sixty nine, fifty six to sixty and thirty four, traveling over sixty one miles per hour. So again, seventeen hundred and forty six potential violations, just at ten miles an hour or over, um, on that particular location. Now I want to, I want to focus on one piece there. Our, our, our travelers learn, right? So those violations aren't going to stay that high. Gone through that intersection once or down that corridor one time and you noticed that, I'm sorry, once you noticed that you've got that, um. You know, ticket, that ticket came in the mail. It says you were traveling over those speeds. You're going to know to slow down when you're in that particular location. Um, so. Uh, I don't think that those violations will stay that high over a long extended period of time, but there will always be a number of violations within that area. The higher the road traffic, the more violations that there would be. When we look at mobile AVI systems, they can be moved throughout the residential areas where speeding complaints are prevalent. They're transportable. It can be a vehicle, it can be a trailer, it can be a mobile in case system, it can be a handheld device. Um, those are all available. It, you know, improve traffic safety, reduces speeding, lowers accident risk, protected, protects pedestrians. There's data-driven decisions that can be made. When we put these systems out there, we're going to have data coming in. And that can help us identify problem areas, provide accurate traffic data for law enforcement and city planners. Uh, it's a cost-effective solution, reduces officer workload, allows resources to be allocated elsewhere. It provides twenty four seven monitoring. We'd love to have cops everywhere, but that's not realistic. But this is a twenty four seven monitoring in the locations and identificat- identified areas where we decide to put them. Twenty four seven monitoring capabilities, great caveat. Supports public awareness campaigns, reinforces safe driving messages throughout the automated enforcement process. When we look at most vendors, and this is kind of where I'll get into some of the, the technology here. Their AI-based incident processes with human verification, so it does require human verification. But most of these systems use two separate AI reads of the license plate. And it runs an automated check on the vehicle to determine whether or not the make and model of the vehicle match the license plate. Snaps photographs. Um, and then, uh, an officer goes back, or it doesn't have to be a sworn position. Any, anyone in the city could go back and review those processes and determine that, yep, that's a verified read. That license plate that we see there is a license plate that is being read on the camera. And they can move that to enforcement, so essentially move it to a, a, a queue that would send out the citation and violations, right? The software platform's designed for user-friendly law enforcement review. That's kind of what I just went over. The payment portal with customizable options for bilingual messaging and multiple payment options. There's a financial system for tracking inquiries and audits. Mobile court interface with downloadable photo evidence and real-time adjudication options. Communication development and support. There are media relations assistances with these companies that provide the services. Um, they develop, uh, FAQs so that we can share with our community different concerns and FAQ, uh, documentation. As well as public facing web content in a full court system so that they can log into a system and, and pay their fine, contest their fine. Uh, whatever they, whatever they choose to do. Potential positive outcomes. Obviously, we can enhance traffic safety and reduce speeds in the community. Great, uh, great outcome. Efficient law enforcement frees up officers for other duties. Some of our, our busier areas where we see a lot of traffic and speeding enforcement. That frees up our officers to spend time on other traffic-related, uh, locations that are maybe less prevalent. Data-driven decision-making provides traffic and safety analytics. Revenue generation fines can support public safety initiatives. And then again, twenty four seven monitoring kind of ensures constant and continuous, uh, enforcement within a specific area. Potential negative outcomes. Of course, there are some. There will be some public perception that this is just a revenue generating grab and. And, you know, it's not about safety at all. It's just about generating rev- revenue. There's privacy concerns, raises debate about surveillance and data use, right? Um, reading license plates on the public way. Legal and compliance challenges, requires alignment with local laws, potential legal disputes, cost implementation. There's contract obligations that would be part of the process. And then potential for errors, risk of misidentification and improper ticketing. That's no more of a risk than any other violation that we write, right? Radars misread, uh, you know, here, we could misread a plate, but again, we have multiple factors. That are kind of in their built-in design for that person, that particular reason. Um, when we look at potential next steps, right? It's really just assess council support, determine whether council has support for this type of technology within our community. What legislative actions are required? We, we would require, we would need city attorney, uh, Lyman to draft an ordinance authorizing Avis technology. And analyzing and define speed corridors throughout the community. We would need technical planning. We would determine optimal camera locations and the quantity. Like I just gave you some data on two, two locations, but that is one direction in two locations throughout the city. We have more data as far as what are our busiest roads that are traveled, um, what directions are traveled. We could look at all of those factors when we look at technical planning. Vendor selection and contracting, identify and engage qualified vendors, execute the contract with the chosen provider. And then infrastructure and development, install necessary signage, infrastructure, deploy cameras. Meet all of the statutory requirements between signage, days of notice, um, warnings. And then begin the actual enforcement practice. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you, Chief, for that, uh, fantastic presentation. Really appreciate. Great, that's really good information. Glad we got it this time around compared to the last couple of times we've talked about this. A couple of questions that I have for you. Well, I was actually just real quick on the numbers. So just basically, just rounding that number to seventeen hundred cars each way, thirty six hundred. That's one hundred and thirty six thousand dollars right there in revenue based on, what is it, forty dollars right there?
So, yes, let me, let me bring that back down just a little bit. So just because speeding is prevalent in one direction doesn't mean that you'll have the same speeding numbers in the opposite direction. Infrastructure and turns and different, um, uh, roadway integration and access is going to change those speeds. Um, forty dollars is the cost of the citation, but a big chunk of that is eaten up in the process.
That's what I was gonna.
Fifteen to twenty dollars. So if you just cut the numbers in half, you're very, you're in a, you're in a zone cutting that number in half. To where you could realize those twenty dollars and maybe not realize all twenty five dollars. And, and the state statute prohibits a company from providing, like, oh, it's, it's thirteen dollars per ticket. They can't do that. And, and the state statute prohibits a company from providing, like, oh, it's, it's thirteen dollars per ticket. They can't do that. They have to identify services for their costs. So there isn't one company or two companies that say, oh, we're gonna take thirteen dollars out of every ticket. It doesn't work that way. It is a very specific dollar amount based on the services they provide, uh, through their systems and A- A- and the AI pieces to that. And then there's a percentage of revenue that just doesn't get collected. Roughly, it's about eighty-five percent of the citations that are issued, depending on the vendor, is roughly about eighty-five percent that you, you collect of, of total violations, right? So, um, you could cut that number in half and you're, you're, uh, right on that number, uh, Mayor.
Okay.
And I did do that math just so I knew that question was coming.
No, I appreciate that. No, I, I was just doing that off the top of my head and looked at it. I knew there's compro- that's why my next question's gonna be, what are the fees associated with that? Well, actually, what could be the total revenue? But that's good information. Yeah, 'cause I get a lot of complaints around, you know, Thirty-Fourth Street, Seventeenth Ave, uh, Thirty-second Street in my neighborhood, just in speeding a lot. I think there's gonna be some great locations and residential neighborhoods to put those up. But, uh, my question going back to that is going to be, um, if court, you said you can't add court costs. If somebody decides to fight that, how does that work? And then can you assess court fees?
So if they fight it, the statute provides an opportunity for them to contest the, uh, the, uh, the fine. And it is a de novo review, means it starts from fresh, from scratch. Um, The answer's maybe.
Okay.
There may be a potential where you could potentially add court fines to that particular violation. But you gotta remember, this violation is civil only. It is not criminal. So, um, when we look at that from our municipal court standpoint, I don't even know that we have the fines schedule set up for civil
Okay.
complaints to be the same as they are for our traffic complaints, so to speak, right? Um, so that it's a potential that that could become a piece, but I don't think, and the number of people that are gonna contest a photograph of them with a radar read is gonna be small, so, you know, what those fees might be is not gonna be, is not really gonna generate a lot of revenue.
Okay. And la- last question then on that is, um, should I just draw a blank? I'll come back. All right.
I have.
She raised her hand first. I'll get her.
So, um, I'm huge on safety, and especially when it comes to speed and all of that. My concern about this type of cert- like, it's kinda going back to the potential negative outcomes about data and, um, surveillance. Right now, there's a huge issue with FLOC, especially in the Denver area, which is a part of this. And right now, um, there's a lot of legislators trying to get those turned off because they're sharing information to ICE. And especially in a community that we have close to fifty percent Latinos. Again, safety's important, but it goes both ways. I'm also concerned about the safety of, about, uh, regarding a particular population that I don't feel comfortable whether this company or vendor that we go with is gonna be, is gonna safeguard our information for our residents. And so that's where I draw a pause, and I wouldn't be for it because of that reason. Um, and again, for me, paramount is safety of everyone.
So to, to touch on, touch subjects there, right? So, um, FLOC, uh, ALPR data, which is similar to this, this is not identical, but it is similar, um, has been adjudicated across the United States, and it has been found constitutional across the United States. Um, there has been some concerns with FLOC lately with whether or not ICE had ac- had act- had
Access.
access to the evidence, you know, to the data. Um, and that's independent to each municipality, like you control your data within the municipality within FLOC, okay? Um, with regard to, uh, targeting of, of, of a population, a specific population, this is a behavioral conduct. Every individual that's driving their vehicle has an opportunity to speed or not speed. It's, it's completely behavioral. This is not, um, indicative of, of any group or, you know, specific community member. This is
And it's not the behavioral component. It's the data and surveillance component that I'm speaking to, 'cause yes, I agree. Um, again, as I mentioned, safety's a concern for me, but I, I'm kinda drawing, um, i- in highlighting that specific concern because it is, it is there, and people are acknowledging it as well. And so I just don't wanna be a part of that. It's kind of like, you know, optics, perception that we're heading in that direction. And again, you have fifty percent of, you know, Latino population in Evans. It's, it's higher than any other place. And so I just wanna make sure that we also keep in mind that right now, you know, there's a lot of, you know, polarization, especially with, you know, specific groups, and so I just wanna bring that up to the council to just be privy of that, of what's going on and making decisions based off that, 'cause it's important.
So I, I did figure out my, my question real quick. Habitual offenders. So you can just continue to speed and just get a forty-dollar ticket? When does it come a point to where it's like, okay, I've seen this license plate as I'm reviewing it twenty, thirty times, just exaggerating the number? Then we go, okay, maybe this is a habitual, maybe we need to look at some other avenues.
So the statute, the statute mandates that you use it for that fine fee, right? Unless they're traveling above twenty-five miles an hour over the posted speed limit, and then we can go personally serve that individual, and it becomes a criminal violation again.
Okay.
All right, so but it, but let's say I had one of, somebody who did eleven, twelve miles an hour over the speed limit ten times. I can't personally serve that individual and bring them into criminal court under this statute. It would be, it would be necessary to to, to stay within the parameters of the civil violation. Once they go twenty-five miles an hour over the speed limit, though, we can personally serve those individuals and bring them into criminal court for the violation. As a matter of fact, we'd have to.
Perfect.
Not, not can, we must.
So you said, though, that for the first ticket, they, it has to be over ten miles an hour, correct? So if I see those signs posted and I slow down to like five over, every time, I'm gonna be okay? Or is it so, so send me a ticket?
The first time that you, you, we can violate an individual, they have to be traveling ten miles an hour or over the speed limit. Subsequent violations, any miles an hour over the speed limit could potentially be a ticket.
Right, but the first one has to be ten miles. Okay, and then you said, of course, we have to put up signs at least three hundred feet before. Well, if I'm going at least ten miles an hour over, does, doesn't that, I mean, I'm, my physics is way old, so I'm not good with that part of my math anymore, but wouldn't that give me, like, say I was going ten over, wouldn't that give me enough time to slow down to where it'd be there to not get a ticket?
And you want that.
Hundred percent. Yeah, and that's the reason for the, the signage, right, is, is to give people an opportunity to be compliant. Um, people will fail. They, they will fail at being compliant. You pass so many st- street signs when you're driving down the street, you, that you don't pick up. Without question, that'll happen.
So the other night, I was going south on Twenty-third, and they had the sign up to measure your speed, and I always watch it 'cause I'm curious. And I was going twenty-seven miles an hour, and it was telling me I was going zero. And then as I got closer, it said, "Slow down," and I was going twenty-seven miles an hour. So, um, you know, I know people are gonna use that to argue the tickets, uh, when was it calibrated, things like that. So with that, and say it does go to court, uh, what's the percentage of people that win versus, uh, like, you know, the city or, um,
So, so eighty-five percent don't go to court at all. They pay the fine.
Right.
Fifteen percent.
Do, 'cause I do know people that would fight.
And there will be people that'll go to court, but I don't have specific data on how many of those, um, would win the case. It's a de novo hearing, like the judge would have to hear everything. All the evidence would be presented, just as if it were any other speeding violation. With the exception of that, we have a photograph of the car and we have the radar. Now, I wanna talk about the radar piece to your question. The radar signs you see out on the public roadway, they're taking, they're different than these type of radars. This radar is calibrated. The company will, uh, certify the calibration. They'll calibrate it on a, on a regular basis according to the statute. And it is a point-in-time read, right? Not the type of radar you're discussing reads a vehicle multiple times over a distance and then calculates out what its speed is. So you're not getting nearly as accurate in a, a piece of information as far as data of speed and time. Because this is a violation we're gonna cite, this is a, a moment in time, so it's gonna be just like any other officer running LiDAR out in the road. They're getting a moment-in-time read on what that speed of the vehicle is.
And then for these, uh, my last question, then I'll give you guys time. Um, how often do they need to be updated or replaced? Because we're already talking about budget constraints, and just looking at this with court, someone's gonna have to review it. It says we have to have some personnel to verify that the tickets are accurate. So then when we add in all those costs, and then how often would it have to be updated? Is it really, right now, beneficial for the city? Um,
So.
I'm just trying to get all the information I can.
So there are multitude of ways you can set your contract with the, with the vendor, right? Uh, many of them are leases, right? So you're getting new equipment. You're leasing the equipment for a period of time, and you can turn that lease over, uh, to additional equipment. This, the, the programs are designed to pay for themselves. They're not out marketing, uh, they're not out pricing the market, right? So the company that Fort Collins uses, that some of the other communities use, um, that company's roughly five thousand dollars a month per device. Okay, roughly. I'm just gonna give you some rough numbers. Roughly five thousand dollars per device. A mobile unit is eight thousand dollars per device. Um, and that was for like a fixed box, not the car. The car is a different mobile device. Um, it's more expensive because you've gotta buy the vehicle, so it's a, an output, right? So you're not gonna lease the car, you're gonna buy the car. Um, you can lease the boxes. They'll move the boxes for you on a regular basis, so on a monthly basis, they'll move them throughout your community. Which you can do, provided you put the signs, post the signs, do all of those different factors in play. Um, so that's a real opportunity for us to use it as a tr- traffic calming measure. It may not pay for itself in that circumstance, but let's say you had a fixed location at one or two locations throughout the city that identified. It would likely pay for your opportunity to use a mobile device throughout the community to, um, do more traffic calming or put in a very residential area where it's not going to necessarily dr- deliver a ton of revenue, but is going to be an active measure the city can take towards those traffic calming measures and complaints throughout our community. Um, so you can end up leasing the, the, the property, you're leasing the technology so that you're kinda getting up-to-date technology on a regular basis.
Thank you.
I know we get a lot of complaint, we get a lot of complaints from our citizens about speeding, and this is a great opportunity to, you know, take some of the burden off the officers and everything and put some, hopefully, trafficking calming, you know, ways in around the community to get people to slow down, especially residential neighborhoods along the eighty-five corridor. I, this might be an opportunity if there's something we decide to do to maybe even partner with Greeley, 'cause Greeley's already implementing stuff like that, and maybe get stuff at cost, but I, I think this is a great tool that we should be using in our community. Councilmember Delaney?
Two quick questions, sorry.
And then we gotta wrap this up here in a few.
Two quick questions, since I know we're already over. Uh, so mobile movement. Every time it moves, we have to go through a thirty-day period of not issuing actual citations?
That I think is debatable, so I'll have to work with Drew on this. So here's, here's the way you could put this out there. Um, let's say we identify, uh, corridors, right, and you don't put a location at every corridor, but you sign it. The first time you put that camera equipment there, you'd have to wait thirty days. Let's say we take it from that location and put it in another location, but then a hundred and twenty days later, move it back. I do not think that we have to do another thirty days of, of warnings. I think we've done thirty days of warnings. We left the signs there, we moved the equipment back, it's ready to be initiated immediately. That's arguable. That is not clear under the statute whatsoever, but the first thirty days, it was in place. Every time we moved it, the first thirty days, it was in that location. Let's just say, for example, we identified four areas throughout the city that we wanted to put special corridors in, and we decided that we're gonna put them in these four locations, and we moved mobile equipment there. The first eighty days, it was in each one of those locations, warnings only, anything after that, citations. Let's say we moved it from here to here, and then we moved it back here. I wouldn't have to do another thirty days of warnings. I think arguably, we could go ahead and cite those violations at that point because there was a thirty-day notice provided. That's all the ordinance requires.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is, you say identify, engage a qualified vendor. Just wanna verify, are we talking, we're gonna do an RFP or an RFQ to go out and competitively bid this?
So that's a decision that we, we would need to make as, you know, that's, that's a policy decision for you guys to make. Um, and you, you guys can guide, uh, city manager on that, and then decisions on what we wanted to do as far as that's concerned. Um, there are sole-source vendors, though, as well, so obviously, we want the best equipment that works correctly and functions properly, and, and some of the vendors are gonna be stronger than others. And that doesn't necessarily mean they're the lowest-priced vendor, but they provide the best service.
So we're, we're over time, but I'll leave it for a couple more questions, if anybody has any. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Uh, two questions. I'm assuming that the license plates have to be on the front of the vehicle?
No, it usually reads the rear vehicle license plate.
Good. And then second question is, what about foreign license plates?
So out of state?
Oh, out of country.
Out of country. If we're able to get registration information, then we could, I, then we could issue the citation. If it's an out-of-state license plate, it just changes the timeframe by which we have to meet all the standards. If it's an in-state notification, we must notify the own, registered only within thirty days of the violation for it to be valid. If it, and that just means postmarked. We, we sent it within thirty days, right? If it's an out-of-state, we have to do it within sixty days. If it's an out-of-country, we've gotta be able to get valid data. If we can't get valid data, there wouldn't be an opportunity to issue the citation.
Councilmember Farrelly, if you had a question, then Councilmember.
My only question is for that category of twenty-five and over. Um, according to our last presentation, I was under the understanding they got scot-free.
That's why, that's why I asked that question.
I was very pleased to hear they have to be served. Is there a, um, is there a substantial difference between them being served by an officer after the fact based on this information? Or an officer observing the violation and stopping this person?
So, no. So if it goes twenty-five miles an hour or over, it takes it out of the Avis identification system and moves it into the criminal court for the twenty-five miles an hour or over, right? Um, it doesn't actually, it doesn't mean an officer has to personally serve him. It just means we as a city have to personally serve the individual with the violation notice, and then it, it moves it to criminal court. Um, so, but I don't necessarily need an officer to do that. I could hire a process server to do that, as long as it was personally served properly, and that would be qualified as personal service.
Hell, you could even do it. Councilmember Neo, then we'll wrap this up.
Uh, is the software capable of identifying multiple viola- violator license plates and tabulating that?
Multiple vehicles and multiple lanes of traffic. So let's say a specific location had, you know, three lanes of traffic in one direction. It'll get all three lanes of traffic in one direction, provided you choose the vendor that does that service, right? So yes, you, if you had multiple, if you had seven, eight, ten cars go through, it's gonna read all seven, eight, ten cars, and it's gonna get three lanes of traffic if it's a three-lane, or a fair or two lanes of traffic if it's a two-lane.
Maybe motorcycles?
As long as the plate's readable, right? Some of them are tucked kinda under the seat and kinda hidden. But if it can get an, if it can get an actual clear line of sight to the vehicle plate, it will capture it.
Right now, that's, there's a lot.
Thank you. So real quick before we wrap this up, council in favor of moving forward with this and looking more into this and getting some numbers from vendors?
Yes.
More information.
So yeah, let's, sounds like we wanna look forward, move forward with this and looking at some cost and.
Yeah, just more information and not implementing yet, information.
More information, yes.
Yes.
All right, awesome. All right, it's, uh,